Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Is anybody here from Rancho Buena Vista? Must be government class, but usually you wait until the very last minute. You guys are right on the ball, coming early. Okay, so I'd like to welcome you all to our council meeting tonight. And we're gonna call the meeting to order. And we'll have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Okay, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance and invocation. And we'd like to welcome Reverend Brian Anderson of the Center for Spiritual Living. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. We're all gonna stand for that. And then you're gonna remain standing for the invocation, okay?
So please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, I know there are people here of... Okay, thank you. I know we have people here of various denominations. So in whatever name, way it seems appropriate, let's close our eyes. And I just do know that the great Creator, God, the infinite presence, whatever name we choose to call the infinite, is right here in this meeting. That the entire city council, everyone in this room is blessed. Everything that's taken under discussion furthers the vision and the beauty and the community in this city. That there's harmony, that there's movement forward, that all things are good. We are so very, very blessed. And we say, "Thank you, sweet spirit. Thank you, great Creator. Thank you, supreme being, creator of all, that we live in such a wonderful country such as this. We are so blessed." And again, I give thanks for the city council members and everyone here and every presentation to be made. I release this prayer now, and so it is. Amen. Thank you.
I'd like to announce that the Brown Act, in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And so the next thing is the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, no closed session was held today, but we have a couple of presentations. And the first one is a certificate to Michael Lopez. He's the winner of our People's Choice Award for his photography, Salmon Creek, which is gonna be shown on the screen, right? So I'd like to take a congratulations. His picture is...is that your picture?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so anyway, so he got the award. He was the winner of the People's Choice Award for his photography. And it's called Salmon Creek. He participated in the recent juried art exhibit, Water. And we also have two tickets to the upcoming play, The Who's Tommy, at the Moonlight, which is coming up real soon. So we're gonna give him this. And here's your tickets to the Moonlight. So congratulations. Okay, the next thing on our agenda, I have Fire Chief Rick Minnick. He's coming up. And he's here to accept the proclamation declaring September 2013 as National Preparedness Month in the city of Vista. And I'm gonna read the proclamation here and present it to our fire chief, Rick Minnick. Says, "Whereas National Preparedness Month is declared each September by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the goal is to increase the overall number of individuals, families, and communities that engage in preparedness actions at home, work, businesses, schools, and places of worship. San Diego County residents have experienced the effects of various disasters, including earthquakes, extreme summer heat, which I understand we had the last couple of weeks, and devastating wildland fires resulting in loss of life and threatening the safety of residents and communities, both physically and economically. Southern California is experiencing prolonged drought and extreme fire conditions similar to 2007 that highlight the importance of disaster preparedness, both at the individual and institutional levels. Whereas the aftermath of the 2003 and 2007 firestorms in San Diego demonstrated the necessities for careful and thorough emergency planning and preparedness among individuals, communities, and agencies locally. And whereas a loss of life and property damage can be greatly reduced if appropriate emergency preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a major emergency. The Vista City Council members are committed to recognizing and honoring the many fine efforts that are dedicated to the best ideals of public service. And so now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim September 2013 as National Preparedness Month." So I want to say, "Congratulations." And maybe, do you have something you'd like to say?
Well, certainly, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, on behalf of the community and the workers, the emergency workers, and everyone here, it's great to have the opportunity to bring the awareness for disaster preparedness. And it's really in all of our best interest to plan and hopefully not have to institute all of the provisions that we have in place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, the next thing on our...there was no...actually, there was no closed session today. And the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. And the recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk or the secretary. And items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the consent calendar. So we have, from the public, we have requests to remove items C3, C6, and C7. So are there anyone on the council that had another item they'd like to remove? Or if not, I would consider a motion to pass the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll move that we pass the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll second it, yeah.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So then the next thing we will do is we'll...it's C3, and Alejandro Sanchez pulled that. So Alejandro? There's no presentation.
Good evening, city council managers, city council members. Madam Mayor, my name is Alejandro Sanchez. I have lived in this community for over 20 years. And really, got my attention, once again, the treasure cash report for the month ending July 21st, 2013. I was looking at so numerous. Are you dealing with $184 million and $74,000? At the same time, I'm looking at my head from the Vista Unified School District. They're dealing with over $211 million, $211 million. Almost $400 million. And yet, our kids from Rancho Buena Vista High School didn't even have enough bathrooms in that school. And yet, we have our students, most in most of our schools, they cut transportation services, and they have to walk distances like you couldn't even believe. I wish that I could see our superintendent walking with them without shirt in the high temperatures, just because he decided to save money. You're dealing with a lot of money. It's your responsibility to take care for your citizens. By the way, my children, they're you citizens, the United States citizens. Don't remember that. We have to care for those guys. You know, those guys are really the ones that needed your help. And you have so much money right there, and you're spending investment, investment, buying and buying. And yet, we even allow schools that are coming to our city. For example, Bellamente Montessori Academy Char School opened the doors with the students that are come from this, from Encinitas, St. Carlosbad. They come from rich neighborhoods. And guess what? To take our money, our funding, our public funding money from our choose local children. Under the watch of our city officials and our Vista Unified School officials. Chairman Ball, you should know better. You should keep an eye on your investments. You're dealing with a lot of money. And by the way, very, very soon, somebody's gonna have... And you're gonna have to open your books. Transparency and accountability, I think, is important these days. And I hope, I hope, you, Madam Mayor, pay attention about what's going on in our city. It's impossible that I have planning commission approving some just for money. Just everything is about money and having a church and somebody selling beer next to the church. Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. If I don't have any other questions from our council, then I would entertain a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve item C3.
Should we comment for our students?
I think so.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Well, Mr. Nielsen, can you explain? Well, first of all, there is a difference between the Vista Unified School District and the city in their funds and who can spend money on what, right?
That is correct. The city of Vista and the Vista Unified School District are two separate, legally separate governmental entities who receives funding from different sources. The school district receives their money primarily from property taxes and directly from the state of California, as we know. You know, the education budget, K through 12, is a very large portion of the state budget. City of Vista, as its own separate entity, we get a portion of the property tax revenues, about 14 cents on the dollar property tax that's paid. We get a portion of the sales tax revenues. And the rest of the money that we receive is pretty much raised through user fees on charges for services provided. So there, you know, there's not a co-mingling of entities there.
And if somebody had a concern then about bathrooms, like Mr. Sanchez, who would they...who should they go to see?
I would suggest anyone who has any concerns about the conditions at the school or suggestions that they would have relating to our schools, that they would go to your counterparts at a school board meeting and raise those concerns or make those suggestions.
Or I might add, they could just go to the VUSD administration and raise their concerns to them. Sounds good. Thank you for that information.
And also, the Montessori school is a private enterprise. That has nothing to do with the school system, I don't believe.
Private school, yeah.
Councilmember, Amanda, do you want to say something? First Councilwoman Rigby, and then Councilwoman Coles.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was the same thing I was going to bring up, is that just to reiterate that the Unified School District is an elected body that governs the school district and the schools within that district, the public schools. And that we are not affiliated with that. We are two separate entities, as was discussed here. So that I would encourage, just to reiterate, questions and concerns regarding the schools be directed to the elected officials at the school board or, as the city manager suggested, at the administration of the VUSD. So that was...I was just gonna reiterate that.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Coles?
Yes, thank you. While these are two separate public agencies, we've made an effort in Vista, between the city and the school district and other cities in the area, to meet regularly to discuss issues of common concern. We don't have authority over their budget, nor do they have authority over our budget. The mention was made of the Montessori school. There is a new charter Montessori school that's going in under the umbrella of the Vista Unified School District. And it does allow students from the region to enroll there. But that is state-supported. And the money goes to support the school program, not the region as such. It goes to pay for the teachers, the supplies, and the educational program, whether they come from Encinitas or Carlosbad or Vista. And we...some years ago, there was a huge overcrowding problem in the school district and lack of restrooms. But since, in the last seven or eight years, a number of new schools have been built, a new high school. And the high schools, you know, seven years ago, had as many as 3,500, 3,800 students in both Vista and Rancho. And now they're substantially down with the opening of Mission Vista High School. So...and the books are open, both public agencies. We can't keep a secret in how we track our expenditures and our money. Anybody that wants to check with Mr. Nielsen, he'll give you a pretty good course on how our money is spent and where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did make the motion to approve item C3.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes on that item. That item is approved unanimously. The next item we'll go to is item C6. And again, Alejandro Sanchez is our speaker.
Councilmembers, once again, Alejandro Sanchez. Affordable housing, this is a real good thing indeed. I love it. I love that...I believe that this is the plan over on Sanafe Drive, close to the McCory and Main Street. And I love the area. I think it's gonna be a good thing, especially for our seniors. I think they're gonna have and take this beautiful opportunity to, you know, to finally have a place where they can afford decent housing. My only concern is that we have...to be very careful. Who do we choose to, you know, to handle this housing program there? I think we have to pay attention very, very careful. I'm telling you, we liable for the actions of others, unfortunately. Affordable housing is needed, and it's always welcome. But remember that our citizens, our Vista citizens, has to be have priority first. Not other people from other cities. Citizens of Vista first. Our seniors are first. Don't make the same mistake again, that we have to get people from other cities. Let those cities be responsible for their own citizens, right? I hope that I pay very, very careful, if indeed it's gonna come up this project, that the agents of the grantee who's gonna handle these properties or this housing, affordable housings, they're the right people. And they have enough, more than enough experience to handle, you know, this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have any other comments on that? Now that I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve item C6.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Please cast your votes. That item passes unanimously. The next item will be item C7. Would you like...do you want to report or show...I have a speaker. Want to hear the speaker first? Stephanie Jackal?
Good evening, councilmembers. Stephanie Jackal, 1500 Green Oak Road in Vista. South Vista Communities was asked if it had an opinion about this license modification. And we concluded that we really didn't have an opinion. But in keeping with our interest in quality of life issues, we do have three questions for you to consider tonight and in the future. Because these breweries are located both in North and South Vista, so it affects all of us. First, what will be the cumulative effect as more and more breweries are permitted? We're very much in favor of the new industry here. That's terrific. But just consider what's going to happen. What about those establishments not abiding by the regulations that are supposed to, you know, be the oversight for the establishments? And we understand that one establishment already flouts the closing hours. So kind of goes on and on. And while downtown may not have many residents at this moment, two affordable housing complexes have been proposed. We just talked about one for downtown, which is great. And a mixed-use development for downtown is nearing approval. And that's gonna be a lot of residents, which is terrific. But what will the impact of the noise amplification be on those residents? So just to think about.
Thank you.
Question number one, which is the cumulative effect if more breweries are put forth. We do have...the item before you tonight is about cabaret, not the ABC licenses. But there are three more breweries that we're aware of that are proposed to come into town, two in the Business Park and one off Highway 78 that we know of. So those are the ones that are proposed to be put forth. And what about those...the second question was, what about those that don't abide by the regulations? And out of the seven breweries that are listed on this sheet here, in terms of cabaret, none of these breweries have violated their cabaret license. There is a provision put forth that if they violate their cabaret license, whether it's a law enforcement issue or city code, that the sheriff's captain or myself have the ability to pull that license back. But in terms of the breweries themselves, they've done a good job policing themselves in terms of the ABC issues. And we haven't had any issue with their cabaret at this time. They all have the cabaret for non-amplified music, and this is granting them amplified music. And the third question was downtown impacts. And the one brewery in downtown where that affects is Mother Earth. They currently have a cabaret non-amplified, and this would give them cabaret amplified.
Okay. Councilwoman Rigby, do you have...
I have a couple of questions, if I may. And I guess Assistant City Manager Zimmerman, you're taking questions. I see in the staff report that it says, "In conversation with owners, they feel the establishments will utilize amplification portion of the cabaret in average of once per week." That's nice information for them to share with us. But is there any...I don't see any regulation in here limiting how many times per week they can use that. Is that correct?
That is correct. The cabaret license allows the amplification during the normal hours of business of each of the breweries.
Okay.
The Brewers Guild actually met collectively as a group, and those who were requesting, going to request the amplification, decided amongst themselves that this is what they would like to ask for. And through the conversation, and I believe a few of the guild members are here, they determined that it wasn't something they would be doing all the time, probably be about once a week, maybe on a weekend, to bring in an act. But that's what they would ask for. From the staff perspective, if we just say Thursday for this brewery or Friday for this brewery, it's very difficult for us to enforce. So we like to make it uniform and just make sure they're abiding by the rules of the cabaret during the hours of operation.
Okay, the other question I have for you is, some of these breweries, most of the breweries, are in the Business Park, which is affecting other neighboring businesses. And I was wondering, has this proposed addition to the cabaret license been submitted to all of the neighbors of the breweries? Are they aware that this is going to happen or is proposed to happen? Have we had any feedback from any of the neighbors of the breweries regarding a cabaret license? Because I see it says during business hours. It seems that it would be a little bit of an inconvenience for any neighboring businesses if they're having live entertainment during business hours. So I wasn't sure if we've had any feedback from neighboring businesses.
I don't believe any feedback was requested of neighboring businesses specific to these cabaret modifications. I will say that the hours of operation for the breweries are generally late afternoon, evening, whereas most of the businesses in the Business Park are early morning to mid-afternoon. So I'm not quite sure there would be an impact. But no, as a practice, we do not notify the surrounding businesses.
And Councilwoman, I might add that we have not had any complaints regarding the cabaret issue from any of the neighboring businesses of these seven locations.
Well, I was just wondering, because in the staff report, it does say hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., or city-approved tasting room hours of 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. So it just seemed that 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. would be in conflict with regular business hours. So I just wasn't sure if word had gotten out and if there had been any feedback. I was just wanting to know. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Coles, did you have...
Yes, thank you. This has sort of been a new and a growing industry in our region. And we've fortunately had a dynamic leadership, not only on the part of the guild and the owners of these establishments, but with our city staff. And we've averted many of these problems before they've arisen. And we will continue to do so. And I think, like I say, this...we're not sure how this is gonna grow or what directions it will take as we have more coming in. But I assure you that I think all the council is gonna be sensitive to the impacts of the neighborhoods and of our city as a whole. So we're anxious to see a positive growth and will be vigilant to assure that it goes in a direction that supports our city's vision.
Does each cabaret license have to be renewed yearly?
That's correct.
So if there was a problem, you know, when they go to renew, we can always not renew it at that point. But so far, we haven't had...we've had problems with just one, I believe. And the rest of them, we've had no problems with. With that...oh, I see. Okay, Councilwoman Campbell?
So I have a couple of concerns over this issue and have a couple of questions for our Assistant City Manager on this. So the information we've been presented...
So, the information we've been presented with is that, you know, we haven't had complaints regarding the cabaret licenses from these breweries currently, which I don't expect that we would expect to have any complaints, seeing as they don't have amplification at this time. So, I don't see, you know, that argument necessarily being very impactful for my decision. But, you know, in response to Councilwoman Rigby's question about whether or not the surrounding businesses have been notified, I think that's a really important aspect to look at, seeing as, you know, we, we've had complaints against one of these that it's on this list from the neighbors around that particular location, while not in regards to the cabaret license, you know, logically assuming that if you have other problems, why, you know, put fuel on the fire, so to speak, by giving them opportunities to cause even more problems to their surrounding area. In addition to that, you know, as Councilwoman Rigby said, it's nice and well that they're saying, you know, we're probably gonna only use this once a week, or we're gonna use it later in the evening is normally when they're open. But if they wanted to start using it within any hours allowed within this cabaret license the way it's, the hours are written, I think we're gonna find that there's an opportunity for some real problems that I think we could address head-on now by either limiting it to later in the evening when most of the other businesses are closed, or putting some stricter and tighter controls in the cabaret licenses to where they're required to keep their doors closed and windows shut and not interfere with any other neighboring business and have tighter controls with the noise ordinances that we currently have. As one of the speaker, the speaker that came up and spoke says, you know, not only the downtown locations, but the last thing that I think that we want to have is having problems with issues in the Business Park utilizing our limited law enforcement resources, having to have calls for service there. So, I think it might be best to look at allowing some sort of cabaret license, but a modified cabaret license if they have an amplification within the Business Park area so that it doesn't cause interference with the surrounding businesses, so that we have to wait until we have complaints from those surrounding businesses to look at making some modifications up to a year from now. I think it would be best to try to look at some of those minor changes now. So, that would be my request.
Well, when I'm looking at this, it's, it's up to three people performing, so it's only a three-person amplification, which I can't imagine how loud, and no dancing. So, I don't know, I can't imagine how loud that would get.
Well, I can say from my personal experience from a current location that has a cabaret license with very similar conditions, it can be very, very loud and very problematic for the surrounding community in terms of the level of noise that's put out from that one particular location. So, I think that, you know, looking at it on paper and you see three people and no dancing and how loud can that be? You know, it can be one person and be extremely loud. So, I think we want to take a, a little bit closer look at this before we wind up having the same problems that other cities are having right now and they're figuring out how to pull back from. You know, you have Encinitas trying to figure out how do they deal with their noise problems? And then you have Alcohone doing the same thing with their deemed approved ordinance, which is something that I'm gonna be asking the council to bring forward. So, I think that it's great that we have this industry coming forward in Vista. It's creating new job opportunities and new small business opportunities for business owners. And the last thing I want to do is be overly burdensome for those businesses, but I'm also very sensitive to the surrounding community that this could impact. So, putting a little bit tighter control and keeping the noise on that property and not affecting the other properties nearby, I think is important to do in this case.
Well, in reading the staff report, it says here, "Staff recommends a continuous of the previous stipulations that prior to the annual renewal, you know, the staff will review any of the sheriff's department, any, any ABC violations. The business owner will provide, provide proof of alcohol and drugs lead training and the brewery will dedicate at least one staff member whose primary responsibility will be to provide security." And I, I think if we have problems, we could identify the, you know, each, like we have already, identified that business. And if, if it got bad, could we remove it? Could we pull their cabaret license?
Yes, you don't have to wait till the?
We don't have to wait until the year's up. We can pull their cabaret license if there's a problem. So, all of them have been very responsible so far. So, I don't know, I would make a motion that we approve this. I have more speakers lined up here. Okay. So, Councilmember Aguilera, followed by Councilmember Rigby.
Yeah, I have a quick question and I may be able to second this. It does make a distinction between private events and public events. The private events would be from nine, basically their entire operating hours. And then the public events would be from the afternoon, right? Three o'clock on?
Generally, yes.
Actually, so.
Let me clarify something, though, that on the, the nine to eleven, which is the hours of operation, that's the hours of operation they're allowed under their ABC license. Typically, most of these establishments are open from three to ten PM or on the weekends from noon to ten PM.
And I would even clarify, in most cases, they, they close around eight. A few of them stay open later, but generally it's.
I think the, the goal, I mean, being realistic, the goal is to stay up open a little bit later.
Sure, and that's what they're allowed to under their license.
So, but what I'm getting at is, it already seems like the music's gonna be from three to ten, right?
I think it depends on.
What does it take for a private event? Is that something that has to be permitted?
If it's inside and it's within their hours that are allowed under the ABC to serve, it, it doesn't need to be permitted by the city. But generally speaking, that's gonna be, you know, closing down for a fundraiser or, you know, a part, a birthday party or some kind of event that they're having that's not when the establishment's open to the public.
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby.
I just wanted to revisit that same, that same issue because it does say private events, but I don't see anything regulating what private events are and when they can be held except for during nine to eleven business hours. So, my, my concern really is the fact that neighboring businesses weren't notified of this modification and we haven't had any feedback. So, I, I, as much as I want to, to do this for them because I recognize where they're coming from, I can see it, this coming back at us with some issues with the neighboring businesses. If we have them deciding what they want to have as a private event happening every day with their music or two, three times a week with their music during business hours all day long, or even on public events where they're doing it from three to ten PM, some of the other businesses in the Business Park are still doing business at three in the afternoon. So, I'm just, I just would really like to know what neighbors in the Business Park think about the, this modification. So, that's, that's where I'm coming from on this one. So, anyway, I just put that out there. I really want to hear some more feedback from the neighbors.
Okay, well, a motion and a second, so I guess if nobody has any more things they want to say, then I would say we need to vote on it. So, cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes on a, on a three to two vote. So, with that, the next thing on our agenda is our discussion item. I think I don't have my agenda here. Regarding an always-stop on Shadow Ridge Drive at Live Oak. Yeah, get your microphone there. Just talk right into it.
Greg Mayer with Engineering Department. Sam Hassan has got a presentation prepared for you this evening on the item.
Good evening. So, our item is an always-stop proposal at the intersection of Shadow Ridge Drive and Live Oak Road. So, currently, left turns from Live Oak Road onto Shadow Ridge Drives are not, are prohibited. And that Shadow Ridge Drive is a four-lane road with a forty mile-per-hour posted speed So, the history on this is that high-traffic volumes and speeds made it difficult to turn left from Live Oak Road onto Shadow Ridge Drive, and that resulted in a pattern of collisions involving the left turns. So, over the years, the residents in the area had requested the installation of a traffic signal or an always-stop to accommodate the left turns. Staff did not recommend the installation of a traffic signal or an always-stop and instead implemented a left-turn prohibition in two thousand and three. So, the left-turn prohibition ended the collisions that were occurring at the intersection. However, the residents again requested the, an always-stop to accommodate the left turns since they've been prohibited. They had a desire to facilitate access from the neighborhood. So, staff reevaluated and based on the conditions that were found out there, such as allowing the access from Live Oak Road, as well as a lot of speeding concerns and a history of accidents that existed on Shadow Ridge Drive, staff recommends the installation of the always-stop and the removal of the left, left-turn prohibition at this intersection. So, just some pictures from the location. This is looking eastbound drive on Shadow Ridge Drive. This is looking in the other direction, westbound. Live Oak Road is on the right. This is on Live Oak Road, and then this is as you get closer to Shadow Ridge Drive, looking to the left. There is somewhat of a side distance limitation looking to the left from Live Oak Road and onto Shadow Ridge Drive. This is looking in the other direction. This is an overall map that shows Shadow Ridge Drive, the four-lane road. We've measured the speeds and the volumes on the street. We had about twelve thousand vehicles a day traveling Shadow Ridge Drive, and we found the prevailing speeds to be around fifty miles an hour, which means it was an eighty-fifth percentile value that we measured. Eighty-five percent of traffic was going at or below fifty miles an hour when the speed limit is forty. So, that recommendation is to approve the installation of an always-stop and the removal of the left-turn prohibition at the intersection of Shadow Ridge Drive and Live Oak Road.
Thank you. I have four speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers first? Okay. First speaker, Ken Leon.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, city council members, and city staff. I live on Columbus Way, very close to that intersection. I support the approval and installation of an always-stop sign at the intersection of Shadow Ridge Drive and Live Oak Road. The west-loop opening, as you saw in the photos, has limited sight distance toward Melrose Drive due to a terrain rise in the roadway. It is also challenging to turn right onto Shadow Ridge Drive from Columbus Way. And as was noted in the analysis, traffic speeds on Shadow Ridge Drive are routinely in excess of forty miles an hour, which is the posted limit. Despite the existence of a left-turn center lane on Shadow Ridge Drive, it still remains a challenge for residents to enter the roadway of Shadow Ridge Drive safely to enter the flow of traffic. I think an always-stop sign at that intersection will solve the problem. And removal of the, the no-left-turn sign exiting Live Oak Road will also solve the problem of heavy traffic on Brewley Lane. I'm sure those residents would welcome that as a significant and intended benefit. The traffic analysis speaks for itself. I support the recommendation and I hope you'll approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, staff. Speaking as an old civil engineer and with life experience, I'm very concerned about your stop sign. I'm sorry I didn't get involved at the staff's level, but I look at the stop sign on Live Oak and Brewley. If no one's on Brewley, people just go right through the stop sign. I see a real problem here with the flow of traffic, traffic particularly coming up the hill and then suddenly trying to stop at the peak of the hill. And if you've got several cars in a queue, I think these stop signs will cause more accidents and more problems than not having them. Enforcement is the issue and you still need enforcement with stop signs. And I think with the twelve thousand vehicles going back and forth on Shadow Ridge, they will quickly realize there's very little traffic coming off of Live Oak and they will just sail through those stop signs. And I think that is a real hazard for us. So, thank you. I'm very concerned that that's not the right solution for us.
Thank you, Mr. Halas. Gene Ford, and he'll be followed by Cliff Kaiser. Yes, we do. It's all the students tonight. We have half a wrench of Vista here, I think, tonight. Are they all seniors? Are you guys all seniors? I'm taking a, yeah, okay.
Good evening, members of the city council and the mayor, of course. My name is Gene Ford. I live in South Vista and Genville and particularly in Shadow Ridge area. And I am here in support of placing two stop signs at Live Oak and Shadow Ridge Drive. I've been in favor of doing that for fifteen years. The most recent thing that happened that I thought was pretty spectacular was I did a tra, a, a count, not a count, excuse me. I measured the speed in two thousand and three when this was last denied. The median speed, the median speed was fifty-six miles an hour. That means half the traffic was more than fifty-six and half the traffic was somewhat less than fifty-six. I think it has gotten worse. I think it's on the verge of someone of these days having some real bad news. And I just as soon see this simple solution, slow traffic down, bring them to a halt, proceed carefully, and cut down the racetrack, because that's the nickname for it in our area, the racetrack. I am encouraged that there are four entities that have supported this improvement in traffic center. One is the technical side, the city staff. One is the Traffic Commission, who voted not unanimously, but substantially in favor of approving this. The Shadow Ridge Owners Association, by a majority, approved it to take place and South Vista Communities unanimously voted to have this happen. So, I think you've got a pretty good cross-section of all the players who have a position to establish or want to have something happen or not happen, as the case may be. I am unaware of any organized effort in opposition to this action, organized effort. And finally, and the best part of this, that this is cheap. To put those signs in is probably less than three hundred dollars. If you've made a mistake, it's a three hundred dollar mistake, as opposed to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a stoplight. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am, am not in support or against this. I live in North Vista, occasionally use that area. I did attend a Traffic Commission meeting when this was proposed and, and brought up a couple of questions that are in your council report in the Traffic Commission minutes. Mr. Ford just mentioned that the Shadow Ridge HOA approved this at their board meeting, but that's one thing that was also not in the agenda report. So, I don't know if Mr. Huzzan has that letter or that formal support, because that's an important part of that community that's gonna be affected by that stop sign. It would be important, I think, important to have something official from that organization to say that they want that stop sign there. There were, of course, concerns at the Traffic Commission about the effect of this stop sign creating other traffic patterns that are gonna cause problems for that area. You just have to be aware of that when those, if that happens, if the, when the signs go up. But I think the more concern that Mr. Ford and others have expressed for years and years is. is the speed on Shadow Ridge Drive. And it seems that you would want to speak about this issue more frequently and raise the priority level of finding alternatives or finding ways to reduce the speed on that, on that road. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one other speaker here, Bill Martin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ritter, members of the council. Bill Martin, 753 Venus View. Stop signs are always an interesting issue for us planners and engineers. Residents typically see them as a relatively cheap way to moderate traffic through their neighborhoods while traffic engineers realize that that's not an appropriate reason to install them. Stop signs and traffic signals require a pretty rigorous warrant analysis before you can go ahead and install them and that was undertaken in this case as well. And I say it typically requires because we know that this case didn't meet the traditional warrant analysis for stop signs, but there are mitigating factors that I think in the staff feels warrants a stop sign in this location. And those are some of the things you've heard that the speeds are already over the posted limit in the area. You've got sight distance issues particularly coming out of that apartment complex looking east. The vertical curve in that road is, is pretty intense. And then you already have the restricted left turn access, which is causing circulation problems already in the neighborhood just by virtue that we've had to restrict those left turns out onto Shadow Ridge. And so, for that reason, I feel that these stop signs are warranted and I would support the staff recommendation and would also ask that you side with the residents of the neighborhood and approve the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. That's our last speaker. Deputy Mayor Coles.
Thank you. Since I live in the neighborhood, I, I have some insight to share as well because I've had, I was approached by a number of my neighbors who walk regularly along, along Shadow Ridge as their exercise routine and are amazed at the speed. Not everybody, but occasionally cars will go through Shadow Ridge in excess of 60 miles an hour. And we have to do something to calm that. And I think this is the best approach we can take. My only, and the left turn only, or the right turn only limitation there at Live Oak creates a real, a real problem for the neighborhood and many people just ignore that. They defy that. And so, that's, that's not a good thing. School buses have to make extra distance on their route because they can't make a left turn lane, turn out of that, of Live Oak. My only question, I guess, is how do we implement this to provide a level of introduction, warning to the fact that this is there because it, it is at a location which is kind of at the, at the rise of the hill where you kind of need to get trained ahead of time that better slow down and be ready to stop. So, that's, I, I favor this. I think it's, it's, it's not a perfect solution, but it certainly goes a lot, a long ways in that direction. So, my question is how do we implement the exposure and training for the drivers?
So, we currently have intersection warning signs exist in approaching Live Oak Road along with flashing beacons, yellow flashing beacons. So, those signs will be replaced with the stop-ahead signs as well as we will paint signal, or I'm sorry, stop-ahead markings in each lane on the pavement.
Okay. Good.
Can you also, I'll just jump in. My thing, could you put a blinking red light on the sign so that, my biggest fear is that people are going to come out of Live Oak and they're going to assume that people are going to stop there. And I'm worried that as they come over the hill, because I'm very familiar with that because I drive there all the time. And so, when they come over that hill, I'm afraid that, you know, the people at Live Oak will assume they're going to stop and as they come over the hill, they might not see that stop sign. So, I'm just thinking, could we do, can you do like a blinking, I've seen them on before, blinking red lights on the stop signs. And so, I'm thinking, I don't worry so much about coming from Melrose and coming up the hill because they can see it, but I'm worried about coming, going toward Melrose, that, that area.
And we have explored that option. Actually, there's sort of a newer type of these flashing red lights where they're on the signs themselves like four or five, like around the perimeter. We were kind of surprised by the cost. It was going to be like in the $3,500 range for two signs and we kind of decided maybe we can wait and see how the operation works, but it's something we can definitely look into and maybe implement.
I, I'd rather not wait and see, you know, until an accident happened or something. I would rather see it, especially at first because at first people are going to be surprised and, and I'm worried about the people pulling out more than this, if they ran the stop sign, it wouldn't be a tragedy probably unless somebody's assuming they're going to stop and they pull out. And then it's like the broadsights, those T-bone ones, those are the dangerous ones. So, anyway, so Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. I, I know that the intersection of Live Oak and Shadow Ridge has unique visual issues, but my question is regarding other intersections that come up to Shadow Ridge and the number of accidents at those intersections. Have there been any?
Not the others. And this one particularly had the issue just because of the side distance problem as well as the volume before the left turn prohibition was taken away. It was, it had substantially more volumes making the left turn and I think that's what resulted in the accident pattern. The other intersections seem to be much lower volume or have more side distance so they haven't had the problem.
Okay. I see this as, the residents have come before the city multiple times asking for this and I see that this would probably be a good thing in that, at that intersection because of the sight disability that they have, but I don't see that this is going to be addressing the speed issues that we have along Shadow Ridge, which are significant, the entire length of Shadow Ridge. So, I do, I live in a neighborhood where we had some speed issues and they put in stop signs and nobody stops at the stop signs. So, we have people still speeding through the neighborhood. So, I do have that concern as well, but I think definitely for the, the left-hand turn and if we can get the, as, as the mayor indicated, get the people to be aware that that is a stop sign and it's important that they stop there. But I do have concerns about the speed throughout Shadow Ridge Drive in general and then whether people stop at the stop signs. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Coles.
Yes, I'm glad you asked the question about the blinkers on the stoplight, on the stop signs because that really is my concern. People along there, it's going to take a long time before they realize that there are signs and to me, $3,500 is a pretty cheap solution. And I would be in favor of exploring that as a, as an implementation of the stop sign. So, I, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but what would it take to upgrade those signs to, because the, the other thing that that does is it brings attention and focus to the drivers. Hey, this is a, you know, red flashing light. We need to slow down. We need to stop so that they don't blow through it as, as randomly.
Look to the budget person.
It would take $3,500.
If I had $3,500, I'd give it to you.
As possible, and I'll ask Sam Hassan, our traffic engineer, are there any other options outside of the flashing red lights that you might provide as alternatives to the City Council in terms of warning devices?
This would be a really good one, I think, probably the best. The other option is that just one flashing red light on top of the sign, same thing with the solar panel, probably comparable cost. This is for the, you know, the cost, I think, is the best. And I think we can probably find the money and the budget in the, our regular account for signs and markings and so on, so we can, something we can implement.
I figured they could.
We do have an available balance in the gas tax account that if the council so desires that we could fund this from, if you want to approve it with the red lights.
Is there also a crosswalk going to be there?
Maybe not, not marked crosswalk just because there's no curb ramps on the other side and the T-side of the intersection. So, technically, it's a crosswalk by law.
Not going to be marked.
Right, right. If it had the curb ramps, we would probably mark it, but just because there's no, you know, ADA curb ramps, we probably wouldn't, but it's still, it's a legal crossing point though.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I have a couple of questions and some concerns. I'm rarely in favor of stoplights, stop signs because I know that the people that are using Shadow Ridge typically going to school like these people out here or going to work. They're probably their parents going to work, so, and I know myself, working individual. We like to have the, the least amount of stops on our way. The flashing light, I mean, obviously, the, the goal there is to notify people and to draw attention and I'm wondering, is this going to be something that at night is going to be complained about from citizens that are not here, that are going to be directly affected? I mean, how bright are these things? The other concern I have, having lived at one time very close to a stop sign, is the noise level that's going to be brought into this neighborhood. Stop signs are very noisy from cars that maybe don't know that the stop sign is coming up or just going too fast and coming to a screeching halt, but more consistently is the taking off of cars because they have to stop, they have to gear down, take off, and the noise level is going to go up as well. So, those are my two concerns and I have a couple of other questions, but maybe you can speak to the flashing light to begin with?
So, the flashing lights, I mean, they're, they're pretty bright. For this particular intersection, the westbound, eastbound traffic is on the park side, so those would not probably impact any properties there. On the other, in the other direction, there's a lot of vegetation and I don't think they'll be visible from that corner house there. It doesn't, that house doesn't front, fronts on another side street, but it's the side of the house, but I think the vegetation will provide a barrier, but that was one of the things I looked at when I considered these. And the noise, I think, yeah, it probably will be increasing from slowing down and taking off. We did notify that, that corner property specifically of the Traffic Commission meeting and the City Council tonight. We haven't heard anything specific. If the noise becomes an issue, it's probably something we'll have to deal with as far as those, you know, immediately adjacent properties, but we haven't heard anything about the proposal from them.
So, 12,000 cars on Shadow Ridge daily, is that?
Yes.
Right? Okay. How many cars on Live Oak and Shadow Ridge currently and then how much, I guess, back in 2003 before we ban the left turns?
I, I don't have the, the specific volumes from 2003, but we did a turn and movement count this year back in 2013 and the volume, so this looks, this is a two-hour count and it looks at the peak hour, which actually we did AM and PM. And in the peak hours, the, the morning is the heaviest on Live Oak. There's about 90 vehicles in that one hour, all making a right turn because of the prohibition. I have observed some illegal left turns just from being out there. So, it's about 90 hours or 90 vehicles an hour. I'm sorry.
Ninety vehicles an hour in the peak.
Yes.
But you don't have the numbers, you don't have the numbers from 2003?
I'm sorry, I don't have that with me.
Do you have the reasons why staff didn't recommend back in 2003?
The, I think it was mentioned that the, in the agenda report, the always stop did not meet the standard criteria that we normally, you know, run against. So, we considered all the other factors in this evaluation, including the left turn to be able, you know, to facilitate the access from the neighborhood as well as all the speed and issues that have been raised over the years. So, this is sort of, I guess, like the dual, you know, proposal, dual solution to the access from Live Oak as well as sort of slowing the traffic down along that stretch.
So, how many homes or units are there? There's a, a set of apartments there and then there's some homes there.
On Shadow Ridge?
I think it's Live Oak. Well, the apartments are Shadow Ridge. The Shadow Ridge Wood Bend Apartments and then there's.
Right, those are down.
Country View Lane, right?
Right.
So, those apartments, they access, they have their own access to Shadow Ridge, right?
They have a driveway that's directly on Shadow Ridge Drive.
We're really talking about Country View Lane, Golf Crest Place?
Off of Live Oak? Yeah, correct.
And then from what I've heard, because I've heard from both sides, I've heard people in support and people against it and, you know, the people in support of it are complaining about Brewley Lane or complain for the people that live on Brewley Lane. I guess people are using that as an alternate route?
I, I've heard from those residents a couple of years ago, maybe. Those are residential streets where the, the houses face the, the streets. Live Oak Road doesn't have any properties that directly face it. They're all off of other side streets and it also has a connection to Lupin Hills Drive, which sort of collects, it's, it's intended to be a little higher level road that collects a little more from the neighborhood. So, that's why it's a good access point onto Shadow Ridge Drive to allow that left turn.
Did you actually, did you tell me the number of units on Country View Lane and Golf Crest? Did you know?
I, I don't have the exact numbers in that.
How many accidents in this intersection?
So, since the, oh, the left turn prohibition went in in 2003, there have been none, but the pattern existed when the left turn was allowed. There was three accidents in a two-year period and that's why the left turn prohibition was recommended and approved back then.
Councilman, if I might add, the number of units appear on Golf Crest and Country View Lane to be approximately 50 units. Okay. My, I guess my concern is, aside from the, the aesthetics of a flashing light and the noise, of course, I'm wondering how many more accidents we may cause because now we've, we're down to zero, which is ideal. And I'm concerned about adding this stop sign and now we're going to have accidents. So, I'm not convinced that this is a great move yet.
Do I have any more speakers?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation. Is that in order?
With the red lights? With the red blinking, with the red blinking lights?
Well, that, that was my original point of view. John did raise the, or Councilman Aguilera raised the issue of whether it would have an ambient distraction or annoyance for, for neighbors and it, it, could those be, do you buy a sign and then add those to it or is that the way you buy the sign? How, how does that work?
It comes ready with the, the lights and the solar panel and the poles, just all one unit. And by the way, these are LED lights.
Right.
Where the light is a little more focused versus, you know, spread in like the old-fashioned type lights. But yes, one whole unit.
What, what is the timeline for, for implementing this?
Well, if approved, we would issue a work order that goes to our Public Works Department, so maybe in a month or so. And I think if council directs us, we can have those lights, those signs ordered and ready by that time. So, it shouldn't affect the timeline too much if we go with the LED stop signs.
Well, that, that is a new kind of angle on this that hadn't been thought of or even discussed on the part of the homeowners who've been analyzing this as to whether, because I know there are some people along the Columbus whose houses back up to that part that might be annoyed by that flashing light. So, I, I guess I'm having second thoughts about adding the, the lights in there.
Gosh, I, I hate to support it without lights because I'm, I'm afraid they won't, people won't see it coming over that hill. If they don't, and if they don't see it and somebody pulls out of Live Oak, you're going to have one of those bad accidents. It isn't like a little rear ender. It's, it would be the T-bone kind.
What if, if, if we install that and it, it, those lights became an annoyance as, you know, because if I lived there and that was blinking in my bedroom all night long, I, I, I'd be down here at City Hall. And again, I don't know. I don't have a visual perspective of that house there on the corner of Columbus Way and Shadow Ridge. Those three or four houses along there might really have, and those are really the only ones that would be affected that I, that I can picture.
Yeah, so there's a couple of houses on the corner itself of Shadow Ridge and Live Oak and then there's the one across the street. Those are the closest. Just again, from, you know, my field evaluation, there's. Just again, from, you know, my field evaluation, there's taller trees, and I think it would pretty well shield the stop sign. So, I don't think it's gonna have that, sort of like a, you know, street light that's high up, that kind of shines in somebody's window. I don't anticipate any issues, but, you know, I think we can always assess if we put them in and there's a problem.
Well, and again, my concern is the initial installation. You know, if they're in place for six months, and then we have some neighbors, some, my neighbors coming in and saying, you know, "I can't sleep at night," I may look at turning them off once people are trained, so.
Can you turn them, I mean, could you turn them off if you had to?
Sure, yeah.
And we could, if so warranted, we could move them to another location and just put regular stop signs in
Sure, yeah.
Once the time period has come.
I am concerned about the initial implementation, and people not realizing that there's a stop sign, and, you know, making a sudden break, creating some hazard. So, I do think the lights are a good idea, and so I guess my motion would include that.
Okay, I'll second, but I have a couple of speakers still. Councilmember Campbell?
So, just a couple of questions, from what I've seen in other cities, when new stop signs go up, and I've seen the stop signs with the LED lights that go around the edge, I've seen some with like five, and some with eight lights around. And a lot of times, I've seen those in other cities, mainly up in LA region, when they are newly installed, and there's a sign that says newly installed stop sign ahead, and those lights, and then I go back through a couple of months later and the lights are gone. So, I'm wondering if maybe there's some sort of temporary option to, that has that capability to install it and remove it later. But one of the questions regarding some of the comments here is that, is that sign going to just be installed? Or is there an option, we can put some indication up, maybe two weeks, four weeks prior to the sign going up, that a stop sign will be installed at the intersection, so it doesn't just pop up and it's there one day?
We can definitely do that. Actually, other, we haven't done it here, but I've seen it in other cities where they have a white sign that says two-week notice, and all that stuff is coming, you know, in two weeks. We can do that, and this is probably appropriate at this type of intersection.
So, I'd ask that we would do that, as well as, you know, going back maybe three months after the signs were put up and evaluating to see if the flashing red light option is still appropriate for that location. Normally, I've seen the stop signs with the flashing LED lights at a smaller intersection, more pedestrian-related intersections, not so much a through-road, as in this location.
I would add that introduction period to my motion.
I still worry, though, I just worry that even if it's over, it's coming over that hill. It's, when you come up there, there's like a hill, and if you don't see it, and somebody's pulling out, it's just scary to me, because I've been there many times, and
Oh, before.
Wanted to pull out and turn left. You know, but anyways, okay.
Well, I don't think we're taking away the option for the lights, the blinking lights.
Only want it for three months?
No, no, I, the idea of having a warning a couple of weeks ahead of time, coming two weeks, be ready, there's gonna be a stop sign here, however you notify.
Oh, okay, I agree, and the light stays, okay. Councilmember Aguilar?
Okay, last, last time. So, our goal really, though, I mean, I know I asked a lot of questions about who lives where, and how many live there, and how many go to that particular intersection, but that's not really the reason this stop sign is going up, right? It's going up to slow traffic down?
It's really both, but the speed and concern is definitely there. It's been a concern that's been brought up by the residents for the past, you know, 10, 15 years. We've looked at traffic common devices before, we've done a comprehensive evaluation back in 2008 of what we could possibly do along Shadow Ridge Drive. Everything that was possible was gonna be, you know, pretty extensive physical changes that would substantial cost, that obviously, with priorities and so on, that there's no budget available to do something like that. And obviously, with the speeds, that we found, as I mentioned before, you know, near 50 miles an hour, we think this might be an appropriate way to provide some relief, as well as provide the access from Live Oak Road.
How successful have stop signs been at slowing traffic down?
In a case like this, where you have the traffic, you know, coming down from their 40s and 50s down to zero, it should be pretty effective, especially going east, westbound towards the light, because stopping at Live Oak Road, and then, you know, taking off, and the traffic light is in sight, probably not much of incentive to speed up.
My concern is, the people, and I'm not sure, because I don't live there, but I think that a lot of the speeding, I'm sure it's both ways.
It's both directions.
But I'm sure in the morning, it's probably crazy, and I think you adding another stop sign just puts more stress on people getting to work, and I think you're, not gonna get to see more speeding, but I think you're gonna still see the same speeding, so, I'm just not convinced.
Okay, so where are we? We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion with the amendment to make sure we have the blinking lights and the warning period.
Warning two weeks ahead? Okay, so, cast your votes.
Who seconded it?
Did I? I think I did.
Okay.
Okay, that passes with one abstent, or one no, with Councilmember Aguilar. Okay, with that, on our agenda, and all you kids, when you come across that stop sign, you make sure they, if you're coming out of Live Oak, you make sure they stop before you pull out, okay?
Good luck.
Tell your friends.
If you're on Shadow Ridge Drive, slow down. Okay, I have three more speakers till the end of our meeting here, so our oral communications. Our first speaker will be Janet, is it Vitale?
Good evening, it is perhaps serendipitous
Fuck right into microphones, everybody can hear you.
It is perhaps serendipitous that we have high school students here tonight. My name is Janet Vitale, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I am here tonight representing the Pacific Bells Chorus. We're a local chapter of Sweet Adelines International, dedicated to the preservation of the American art form Barber Shop acapella-style singing. And we accomplish this through public and private performances, competing against other choruses in the region, and with scholarships awarded to deserving students. This year, we're expanding our educational efforts to include a one-day workshop and evening performance. This Harmony Festival, entitled Barber Shop Acapella Rocks, will be held on Saturday, October 12, at the Redeemer by the Sea Lutheran Church in Carlsbad, and it is open to all North County high school-aged students. The students will spend the day learning various musical techniques, choreography, and performance-enhancing skills that can be incorporated into other performing arts. Their efforts will be showcased in a public performance that evening. We are currently seeking sponsors and have a number of great advertising opportunities for anyone trying to market to this demographic. With enough sponsors and a small grant from the Young Singers Foundation, registration costs will be minimal, about $20 per student, to include lunch and dinner. To register to be a participant, become a sponsor, purchase tickets for the evening, or find out more about this fun youth activity, please visit the event's page at our website, www.pacificbellschorus.org, or email barbershop rocks@pacificbellschorus.org. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. I think you should have come up and sang.
Well, we did consider doing that, but didn't think it would be inappropriate for the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Alejandro Sanchez.
I'm gonna have to waive my time. I know the rancher students, they need to be signed, so I don't wanna talk. I think it's better to let them know that they can get signed in the back by the employees, and also here. I think that it's almost done, the meeting is almost done, just getting there.
Hello, you need to look at us and talk, when you talk.
No, that's all, I wait, I'm not gonna talk.
Okay, okay, okay. Next speaker, Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. I'm sure you're aware that the Palomar Airport runway extension feasibility study was recently completed. That's going before the County Board of Supervisors, probably later this month, on the 25th. That feasibility study, as well as a presentation briefing, is on the county website. I happen to be on the Palomar Airport Advisory Council, and would like to, if you're interested in giving that presentation to the council and to the public at some future council meeting. I'm sure you're aware that the airport is a big economic asset to North County, and particularly Vista, and this feasibility study, and that's all it is, needs to be understood by the public and all that are gonna use that.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. With that, we are on to remarks, so I will start with, how about Councilmember Aguilar? We'll start this end this time.
The only thing I would like to thank the public and the council members that showed up, is coming to the, sorry, the 9/11 celebration, which of course tomorrow is 9/11, at Faith Lutheran Church this weekend, we had a great showing there. We had several firemen, Highway Patrol there, and many veterans there. And we had a couple of veterans that Mr. Coles and Mr. Campbell also visited with from World War II. Pretty interesting to have them there and speak to them, and, you know, these guys are aging out at this point, and so it's kind of neat to talk to them and hear the history that they went through. But just don't forget about 9/11 tomorrow. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
No comment.
No comment? Okay, Councilmember Deputy Mayor.
Just a quick comment, I was honored to be able to be at that event, at the Grace Lutheran Church, Faith Lutheran Church, yeah. And to meet the people who serve us in public service and safety. And also, next week, I will be visiting New York and the 9/11 Museum, so I'm looking forward to that, and the timing is appropriate, and again, we shouldn't forget our history lesson there.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you. Just to reiterate, Deputy Mayor Coles and Councilman Aguilar, tomorrow is September 11th, the anniversary of the attacks on our country, and I just want to say, in our busy days tomorrow, at work and at school, please take a moment to remember those who died, those who have fought for our country, and where we are today. And I also want to say thank you to the students for being here tonight, and thank you to those of you who are still here for staying till the very bitter end. And I would like to see you, yes, go ahead. Thank you. I wish you all As in your classes this semester, and I hope that we see you again, not just for getting your papers signed off, but I'd like to see you involved in the community, or to come and talk to us if you have issues, or your mom and dad might have something that's going on that they want to talk about. I encourage you to come back and visit us again when it's not a school assignment, but it's always good to have you here. And I want to say thank you to city staff, as always, you guys do a really great job for us. And also, only because I sat through three meetings with the City Selection Committee regarding the Coastal Commission, we finally have our San Diego representative, was appointed yesterday by Assembly Speaker John Perez. Our San Diego representative on the Coastal Commission is County Supervisor Greg Cox. So, that was finally done yesterday, so I just wanted to report on that. And I will be heading out, along with Assistant City Manager Ally Zimmerman, and I think our city attorney, going to the California League of Cities Conference next week up in Sacramento, so.
Very good. And I just have a few announcements here. The Moonlight Summer Production of the Who's Tommy, that starts Wednesday, September 18th, I think it's a week from tomorrow, a week from tomorrow, yeah. Summer ticket sales thus far have exceeded last year's sales. It's moonlightstage.com if you want to go online to see them. If you're a budding photographer, consider entering Vista's 50th Anniversary Photo Contest, capturing pictures, what makes Vista great, and submit your entry by October 18th. Thanks to our sponsors, cash prizes will be awarded, and winning entries will be exhibited in the Civic Center, here, and then at the Vista Library, and information is available at cityofvista.com/50. A couple other ones, the California Coastal Cleanup Day, Saturday, September 21st. Vista volunteers are being recruited to pick up trash and debris along Buena Vista Creek from nine to noon, so consider volunteering and helping that for a few hours. The creek runs along Sycamore Avenue and Shadow Ridge Drive, and so that's CleanupDay.org, if you're interested in that, a good community service project. And the last thing, Humane Society's Mobile Clinic will be at Bringle Terrace Park, September 28th, and it provides affordable vaccinations and microchips for your pet, right?
Yes.
Well, okay.
Or for your child.
Okay, well, okay, no, okay, the reason I said that is because there's a typo on here, it says for your past.
Past, pet.
Okay, for your pets. Okay, so Vista residents can also stop by to renew and purchase, or purchase a new pet license, that's sdhumane.org. And that is the end of my announcements for the day. Council, City Manager, you got some?
Yes, just one item, wanted to let everybody know that the Moonlight has had one of the most successful seasons this season so far, and we still have one show to go, as the mayor mentioned. Young Frankenstein is now our fourth highest grossing show of all time, and so the three shows this year, Wizard of Oz is the first highest grossing, Young Frankenstein is number four, and South Pacific is actually the sixth highest grossing show of all time in the Moonlight history. So, it's a great season so far, and we're hopeful that the Who's Tommy will be in that top six as well, it'd be very nice, and that's all I have to say tonight.
City Attorney, anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Much though I would like to speak for about six minutes, I have nothing further, thank you.
No, okay, I say, okay, then we are adjourned at 6:56.
You got it.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
You have to give one to the next person.